Between Gibson and Winner.
I'm assuming here compared to the closing.
So we take metallic sodium in. And we have a discussion.
Sure.
Okay, I'm not even paying attention here. So we have the light on and that means that we will be getting started here. So welcome everyone this evening. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Allison, if we could get a roll call, please.
Allison?
Here.
Sykes?
Here.
Johnson?
Killam?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Conopa? Here. And Johnson is excused. Okay, let's see, council first you have on the agenda. This is on page two. This is accepting Iris Carrasco's resignation from the Community Development Commission.
Move to acceptance and a thank you note, do I?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, so this is the continuation of a legislative public hearing. And this is regarding text amendments to the Albany Development Code as described in planning file CP 0317, DC 0117, and ZC 0217. With that, with this, folks, we have already had the public hearing. We continued it. And that was to Monday's work session. So the council could get some questions clarified. And that's why it's still continued for this evening. And with that, would staff like to do a report?
What would you do if they said no?
Then I would ask you to just do a motion.
Should I say no then?
Yeah.
Yeah, just move right into it.
All right, well, I will, I think I will move right into it then. I think that's good advice and I'll be quick. There were two issues that were, that were raised during the last meeting on this that I think we still needed to bring some resolution to. And one of them was raised by the mayor and it was regarding, I'll skip through here, a question about whether or not a performing arts center would be included in the definition of entertainment and recreation indoor and outdoor. Because it was a concern that maybe we'd be able to have such a center that would be, that we would want to be able to allow in the waterfront zone. And so to address that particular concern, we're proposing to specifically include the term performing arts center in the definition of entertainment, recreation, and indoor use. And, and then where we had a section about the uses that would be limited in the waterfront zone, it's not there. So that means that by explicitly stating that performing arts center is that use type and then going to the other part of the code and explicitly saying that it's not limited, that it would be allowed to be considered in that zone. So I think we try to address that concern that way. The other, the other issue that was raised, it was raised by, by both the mayor and as well by public testimony, Candace Rivera and Scott Ledman, raised the same concern regarding the use of the term reasonably feasible as related to a driveway spacing standard. There wasn't a real concern, I don't believe, or I didn't feel real concern about the actual driveway standard, which is a 25-foot spacing requirement for certain types of residential development. But the concern was that, that standard, it may make sense to allow flexibility from that standard in certain circumstances. And the way that we were originally trying to allow consideration of that flexibility was by allowing an applicant to demonstrate that, that it was reasonably feasible for them to not meet that driveway standard. And we had a definition for that term reasonably feasible. But there were concerns raised by the city council and by the public about how that term might be applied. And it seemed unclear and uncertain to everybody how that, how that might be applied. And so during the last meeting, there was a suggestion from Candace who's here this evening, that we look at allowing that flexibility to be considered by, by allowing a developer to go through a conditional use process. And staff evaluated that suggestion and agreed that that's probably a really good approach in this particular case. Because it, it one, gives a developer an option to request flexibility from that particular standard if they're doing that particular type of housing development. The compatibility review process means that it would be reviewed by the planning commission, who is a body that's, that's given the authority to apply discretion to land use decisions. And it uses an existing process. We don't have to make major changes. So it seemed like a really good interim solution until we get to the point, as we were discussing during the very, very, very last meeting, where we could actually get to a multi-track review system. So I'm putting this on the screen just to, for the record primarily, not to get into looking exactly at the language, but this is a language that we're proposing for the code, starting with table 5.1 of the, of the use tables. And we're saying if you're that kind of a development and you, you can't meet the driveway standard, then you can go through the conditional use process. And then more precisely, here is a driveway standard. And you can see number two there, we're saying if you can't meet the 25-foot spacing requirement, then you have the option of applying for a conditional use approval. So I believe, staff supports this and recommends this approach. And I think that it addresses the concerns raised by the council and the concerns raised by public testimony regarding, regarding this issue. So I think with, with that, I can close my presentation. I'll note that before you this evening, there are motion sheets. We've recommended motions, suggested motions. We want to consider those. And at this point, staff would recommend option one, which is approving the proposed amendments as presented this evening in a staff report. I will close with that and I'll take any questions from my team.
Okay, all right. Staff have any questions to Bob over these changes? Okay. With that, is there anyone that wanted to comment on, continue commenting on these code amendments, the central Albany code amendments? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:24 PM. And council, you're going to have two different motions to make here. You've got one that needs to be a motion made over the development code amendments. And then you've got the comprehensive plan text amendments.
Mayor, I believe that, that both of those ordinances are addressed in
Yes, they are in the one.
Together in each motion.
They are, okay.
So if you choose a motion, both, it's applying to both ordinances.
Okay, all right.
Move to approve the ordinances as addressed with the changes by staff.
Which motion, number one or number two, on the pink sheet?
I think Bob said option one. Is there an option on it?
Which option do you want?
I don't have the sheet. You got it?
Oh, as, okay, I move that the city council adopt as modified.
Well, there's this one too that, it addresses the modification.
I think that the, the way, the reason I suggested number one is if the council isn't going to make any modifications tonight to what I just presented, that you could just approve as presented tonight and as presented in the
I overly simplified.
Well, I think it was, I think it was probably fine. I think you could, you could move to approve as presented in the, in the staff report, except as, as modified this evening.
What he said.
Okay, Allison have that? Okay, all right. Is there a second?
I think I understand what he moved. And if it's that, that we use option one and allow a conditional use for the parking situation, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion, Rich?
If I look through all the changes made, I don't have great heartburn with, with a whole lot of it. What I do have a heartburn with, however, is restrictions on business that from my perspective do not have to be made. This is one of those times I may vote for it grumbling. And the reason I can vote for it grumbling is I can see the light at the end of a tunnel in however many months when we have the possibility of having a dual track system. Because at that point, then it gives people more freedoms to get through the system. And if they can prove that something's good, well, then it makes them golden instead of having to fight the system for however long. So grudgingly, I guess, is where I'm going.
Okay, any more discussion?
Well, I'm tending to agree with those comments, but I'm wondering, are there particular restrictions that give you a heartburn?
Okay. Saying you can't have a business downtown? I mean, this is, this has been a longstanding problem for me.
No, no, you mean any business or a particular?
Well, that you can't have it like a manufacturing business in certain areas. Now, I don't, no, I don't think anybody's going to want to have a manufacturing business making a bunch of noise and, and trains running here, there, and yawn and that kind of thing. However, not all manufacturing is like that. There are, well, Bomax is a manufacturing business. They manufacture barbecue sauce. Now, you go by the letter of the law, if, if they are right there, if they want to move in one of those places, nope, that's forbidden. Well, common sense says if you're not making any waves, so to speak, you know, people ought to allow the things that don't cause problems. And when we have a rule that says, nope, can't do it, that means that they can do it there. Which means that the owner of the business loses, the owner of the building loses. I mean, I don't, I don't know, we may be losing a cheese factory here in town. They were, they were looking for a place and had issues with various places they could find. It's my understanding they're looking other places too and may have found someplace. The more restrictions we put on us that don't achieve a specific goal, the bigger the problem from my perspective.
So Bob, Bomax wouldn't be considered manufacturing though? When they're just making sauces and barbecuing and food prep?
They're not barbecue.
It could, that sort of thing could be considered, depending on the size of the building, manufacturing or small scale manufacturing. I was just going to try to take a quick look, but I think that, like small scale manufacturing would be permitted in the central business zone and the waterfront zone. It wouldn't be permitted, actually, it might even be prohibited downtown. But I hear, I hear your point.
I mean, take a ticket.
But they would be more small manufacturers.
Yeah, take a ticket's manufacturing. And if they're, if they moved to a different zone or someone that was like that, they'd say, nope, that's for hook and we can't do it.
No dinks making t-shirts?
No dinks, yeah. I mean, if, if you're on the wrong side of the line.
Yeah, I think it's more for larger scale manufacturing.
Well, but
It wouldn't be real desirable downtown.
When, when you make a rule and you then have to live by it, it doesn't make any difference whether or not that's what you meant at the time. It means that you put, you put windows in the side of buildings that aren't doing anything for the building. Or you make them jump through hoops. Anyway, that's, that's my issue with it.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, so, yeah. So a legislative decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following adoption of an amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted texts and findings and notify the department of any substantial changes which may have occurred in the proposal since any previous notification to the department. Okay, with that, is that everything? Bob? Sometimes when it comes to doing the motions, it evidently covers it. Bob, do you need to have the formal reading of the ordinance or not? Is that taken care of, that was in this motion?
I, I think that we
That's what I was asking, did, was it, I wasn't at the last council meeting, so I don't know if Delapore read it.
I don't think the council has read an ordinance yet. We have not read that ordinance. And so I think that, I think it would need to be read and then the mayor
Why don't I read them and then we'll just make a motion again?
And then council can, yeah, they can do a reading again on it, just to be on the safe side.
Right.
Can't do it again. Can't do it again. We'll have to vote against it now.
Actually, I know I've read this before, but I don't know if you've read it twice. But I'll read it twice again just to cover.
You want me to vote, you're going to have to give me a date specific, but we're going to start that other right now.
In this hearing, it's open.
This is a continuing week.
I know I read this before, so I just didn't have to read it again.
You know what, wouldn't know. Yeah. We haven't read this ordinance. Because we just closed the public hearing. Yeah, I don't believe that we, yeah, I don't believe that we have.
Let's do it. Yep. All right, ordinance number one. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code and zoning map by amending the Albany Development Code text and Albany zoning map relating to the downtown Albany area and adopting findings.
I'll move the ordinance to be read a second time, title only. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code and zoning map by amending the Albany Development Code text and Albany zoning map relating to the downtown Albany area and adopting findings.
Two for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Now the other one. Do you have that?
Got it. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4447, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan by amending the Comprehensive Plan text to create the downtown mixed-use zone as an implementing zone for the Village Center Comprehensive Plan designation and adopting findings.
I'll move the ordinance to be read a second time, title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4447, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan by amending the Comprehensive Plan text to create the downtown mixed-use zone as an implementing zone for the Village Center Comprehensive Plan designation and adopting findings.
Move for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we got them done.
Got them.
All right, thank you. Sorry, folks, we just had a little formality there to take care of, so, okay. And that's it for the legislative public hearing. Next is business from the public. Is there anyone here that would like to bring an item forward? Yes, Tom?
I attended the Lynn County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council Meeting today. There's an acronym for that, but I can't pronounce it.
It was Lynn County.
And this has to do with what I brought to the council Monday about Senate Bill 719, which is the confiscation of weapons. It's called a, an extreme risk protection order, ERPO. And Councilman Killam was there today and appreciated his comments. There was a robust discussion about the, they didn't use these words, but about the craziness of this bill and how it's a nutty thing to try to enforce and why would it ask constitutional muster and all of that stuff. And I, I ask, I was allowed, I was there as a member of the public and I was allowed to ask questions and make a couple of statements. And as a sidebar with Sheriff Riley after the meeting, because I tried to get, I tried to pose the question, what process are his officers going to follow when someone calls and says, my husband is a nut job and I want his, you guys to take his weapons away. So what's the deputy going to do? And, and the answer is, that I got clearly from Sheriff Riley, is no officer in the sheriff's department will be allowed to unilaterally, at his discretion, go to a judge and ask that that ERPO be served on an individual. That the officer would write, would write up the complaint that he was involved in. And that complaint would go through the process and it would only be after the sheriff approved the decision that somebody wants to file, go to a judge and file an ERPO claim against And that's helpful to me. And I think that's the right way to do that. And so I would ask that the council work with your police chief to develop a similar Because the way I understand the law is written, it allows a law enforcement officer or a family member or a member of a person's household to make an allegation and petition a judge to take their weapons away. And so I have no control and none of us do have any control over a family member or a member of a person's household. But certainly, you can imagine that a, a law enforcement or somebody might call 911 and, and that then would begin the process. But proper administration of the rule is what is necessary. And Sheriff Riley said that's how they're going to process it. It'll have to come across his desk before it goes to a judge asking for that ERPO order. Okay? The other thing that, and there was a lady there and I don't know her name, but she brought up the whole notion that this is a so-called, an extreme risk protection order, but after a person is served with the order that came, that comes from a judge, they have 24 hours to turn in all their weapons. So they can create whatever havoc they want for the next 24 hours and then turn their weapons in. I mean, that's how, how ill-conceived this whole thing is. And I wanted to just poke fun at that because it is kind of odd. So, and, and if Councilman Killam would, I would hope that you would make a comment or not, but I didn't, I'm going to be leaving here in a few minutes and I didn't want you to make a comment later that I don't know anything about.
Look, to his, to his point, the commission can't really do a whole lot until something, somebody's ox has been gored. And still then, it has to be done legislatively. There was some discussion about, there are several things, several reasons it might be held unconstitutional, one of which is it doesn't say guns, it says weapons. So any one of our houses has in numerous, well, you have steak knives, you have all your kitchen knives, you have your car. I mean, that depends, yeah, pocket knives, all kinds of stuff like that, that, you know, there's no definitions. In addition, there is no, you're not being able to meet the accuser when they, you know, you have to go after the fact. I mean, there are a number of things that, and it is being, I understand there are people out there gathering signatures. So Captain Heinrichs was there and would have this that he can then speak with the chief about, and I'm sure he will do that. I mean, if we want him to, you know, make sure he speaks to the chief about it, because he was there as the chief's representative. But in the short run, what the action by the commission is, is that you're going to find out whether or not, because there are people out making an attempt to put it on the ballot, it may or may not go into effect on January 1. It does not have a, an emergency clause in it. And so there is some time between then and now and then that, that due diligence can be done.
I think we'll, we'll have our city manager follow up with staff on it and, and the chief and just see what more the specifics are on it.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone. Next is adoption of the findings. This is the zoning map amendment. This would be on page six. This is the findings that are for the North Albany Zone Change denial. So Bob, did you want to refresh the council on this one?
I think I'll, I'll ask David to do that.
Sorry, David, I didn't see you sitting up front, so.
Yeah, I like to see some files. David Martino, lead current planner for the City of Albany. So what you have before you tonight is a set of findings that we were asked to prepare from the last council meeting and tentatively denied the zone change CC 02-16. So what we did is to go back and listen to the testimony. We used council hearings that led to the discussions that then led to the tentative denial. And so what we have here tonight is the set of findings we felt could support your denial of the zone change.
Okay, all right. Counsel, this is the set of findings, it's on page six. What would you like to do?
I'll make a motion to deny the request for the zoning change.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. I'll reiterate, reiterate some of the things I've already said before, but I'll also cover just a minor language change that throughout the justification for the denial, it says the council fines, well, I suggested it should say the majority of the council fines. It implies that it was a unanimous vote on our favor, on us to deny this. I do understand that counsel, or that the staff is required to be able to justify both ways, which has always disgruntled me, but, but there it is. I also take note, and maybe it's because of the bias I'm bringing to the table because of my belief on what the first staff report, I thought was absolutely very accurate. The justification that is used throughout for the denial, all the way through this on different points, it says they're based on, I think, very, very subjective criteria. It's from individuals It's from individuals that have very heartfelt passion, living in the neighborhood, and there's no doubt about that. But it says things that they may be or could be incompatible. There's no specific that says that they are, will, shall be incompatible. It says that they may be possibly incompatible. And I think that the thing that scares me the most are the ramifications that the developer has, although he has said on an interview in the paper that he was not, he would not do so, he does have the full wherewithal to say, fine, I've got 48 hours, I can probably take those trees down, and then I'm going to sell the property and move on. I'm going to put, or I'm going to have all apartment complexes put up there, that's going to look over the fences and the people right next door to it. I tried to make it better than what the existing code is, but some folks don't like the potential ramifications of that. And to me, it just honestly smacks of a classic definition of not in my backyard. And I'm going to vote no on the denial.
Okay. Did you want to address that about it needs to say city council, and that we can't say?
Yeah, I can talk on that a little bit. So the council acts as a body, as a whole. So, and an example of that would be when you read a court opinion, an appellate opinion or a Supreme Court opinion, it says the court finds, the court will have a panel of judges, but then your vote is noted on, in the minutes. And so you would be what they would have called the dissent of the opinion. You'd be the dissenting opinion, or who else votes? No, if you're in the minority. Not saying that you will be tonight.
I just couldn't want to imply that it was unanimous solely across the...
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, all right, that's four to one, and motion carried. Get that, Allison?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And with that, a quasi-judicial decision of the city council may be appealed to the land use board of appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following adoption of an amendment or land use regulation, the director shall forward to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted text and findings and notify the department of any substantial changes which may have occurred in the proposal since any previous notification to the department. Okay, all right. And is that it, David? You didn't need anything else from us? Okay, thank you. Counsel, next you have adoption of the consent calendar, and there's just some minutes, and one license renewal. So if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, this is awarding a contract for two meter readers for water meeting reading services beginning October 1st. So, all right.
Good evening, Madam Mary Counsel. Awarding tonight is an award, a contract, awarding tonight is a resolution to award a contract for water metering services, meter readers LLC, beginning October 1st. On July 31st, the city advertised for meter reading services through a formal competitive RFP process, and Democrat Herald and Daily Journal, but a few responses were received from qualified vendors. The proposals were majored in four areas, project understanding, cost, relevant experience, and key personnel. Meter readers received the highest score, as shown in the table in your council memo. The current meter reading contract is with meter readers and will expire on September 30th. Meter readers have read meters with the City of Albany for close to 30 years. They have an extensive knowledge of our meter locations, provide timely and accurate reads on a consistent basis each month. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this subject.
I didn't do the reverse math on it, but the total cost is going to be approximately What was it under the old rate? What is the difference? What is the increase?
The new proposal is 52 cents for reader reading.
Right, the old one was the 468.
Yeah.
Right, I didn't do the reverse math to figure out what that dollar difference, I was wondering what the total. It's, it's planned into the city budget, as far as we've already got that for that.
Okay. Okay. What would you like to do with this item?
I'll make a motion, the contract be awarded to meter readers.
Okay, I think there's a resolution on page 36.
There is, so I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
On page 36, awarding the contract to meter readers.
Okay, the motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you. Okay, we had a nice, easy agenda this evening, and so business from the council. So Rich, anything this evening?
No.
Okay, all right, Ray?
Nope.
Hey, Mike?
No.
Bill?
Nope.
Dick?
No.
Goodness, yeah, that was an easy one. Normally, we do have staff, so I didn't have anything this evening, so...
And I wouldn't break that.
Oh, okay, you don't have anything, yeah, so, okay. And staff have anything this evening? So, wow, I think we're doing a, one of our record-breaking council meetings, so this is a nice, short one, so. Okay, and so with that, we have a work session September 25th, a regular session September 27th, but we do have Kara next week, and I think that was it on this week?
Joint meeting.
Oh, joint meeting with Millersburg on the 18th, at Millersburg City Hall.
Monday, Monday.
Yeah, next Monday, so, and that'll be at Millersburg. Yeah, okay, with that, we adjourned. All right, thank you, Bob.